With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the open meeting act is on the wall. Thank you for everyone who's here at a grand total of one degree and 15 below zero in wind chill. We appreciate you being here. Uh, open meeting act is on the wall, consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered by a root, by routine by the city council and will be enacted one with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials have any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of the regular meeting on January 6th, 2025, as on file in the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $897,461.53. Item F, approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $108,156.7. Item G, approval of change order number three, decrease in the amount of $8,841.38. And final pay request number five in the amount of $213,189.93 to Contractors Incorporated for the 33rd and Lincoln Street reconstruction project as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item H, award of the bid for armor coating various locations, 2025 project to stay built construction in the amount of $64,040.24 as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item I, award of bid for the asphalt ceiling various locations, 2025 project to Hall Brothers in the amount of $86,370.40 as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Resolution number 7489, executing the master professional service agreement, work order to master professional services agreement and all necessary documents between the city and Spence Lewis, a Baumann company for engineering services related to conducting bridge inspections for the bridges located within the city as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item K, resolution number 7490, entering into a master agreement work order number four with Olson Incorporated for the water transmission main post-construction support as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item L, resolution number 7491, authorizing Kerry McGurrie to be an authorized signatory for the BPW customer utility deposit account on behalf of the Beatrice Board of Public Works. And item M, resolution number 7492, authorizing the city administrator, general manager for the city to write off any and all bad debts, including but not limited to ambulance bad debts, Board of Public Works bad debts, and Mars bad debts. Anybody want anything pulled off of the agenda? Seeing none, Mr. McLean.
I move the items listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Okay, your vote please. Consent agenda passes eight to zero. We have two public hearings tonight. First public hearing is for the purpose of receiving public comment concerning the community development block grant number 21-HO-36035, owner occupied rehabilitation project awarded to the city. That, oh, that, uh, open, or the public hearing is now open.
Just a brief background for everybody recalls this. This grant is our owner occupied rehab grant. This is the one where you get different projects, different houses in town that are being improved, usually up to $24,999. And we don't know what the house is, we don't know the address, we don't know the recipient. Those are all because of federal rules and regulations. Uh, we've approved a number of those that are out there. And we have Cole with Send who's going to come up and kind of talk to us a little bit about the program. Uh, we are required to have two public hearings as part of CBD grants. So the first one usually have before you awarded the grant and then you have one during, during that. So, uh, that's why we have Cole here with Send.
Oh, welcome.
Thank you. Um, so yeah, I guess I wasn't planning on talking a whole lot, but I don't know what you guys know about it and what you do, but, uh, Tobias kind of covered that. Um, as far as kind of an update of what we're going after. So the initial goal of it was supposed to be 18 houses, um, given the amount of, uh, funds that were requested. Um, so with that, we got a total of 30 applications received so far throughout the grant, uh, period. And that grant period is about up. So, um, the program I think ends this February, this upcoming February is when that'll be, I think, supposedly closed down unless we, uh, request an extension for it. Um, so out of the 30 apps that we've received, we've completed eight. So eight total products have been completed, work done, documents taken care of, they've been finalized. Um, six are awarded to the contractors. So that means, uh, the jobs have been approved as far as the write-ups been approved by the committee. And then the contractors just waiting to schedule it and get the work completed. Um, we have four currently under construction, so in the process of being worked on. Then we have another one that's completed and then a final inspection. I just did two, two final inspections today. I don't know exactly where that comes in in this. This might be a little older data than what I have, might be a couple of weeks ago. Um, but I did do, did do two final inspections today because our work was finished recently. And then we have, out of the 30 of those are, 11 of them are non-slecks. So that would be maybe the, uh, their property is in a flood plain. Um, could mean that they are over income, so it's a low income program. So you have to meet the income eligibility. Or they applied too late, so we were already out of funds or the funds were already obligated before they submitted their application or responded to us to get some more paperwork in. Um, or they just maybe had some health issues. We had a few people that had some health issues and just withdrew from the program or they no longer wanted to proceed with it. So, um, so that's kind of where we're at with it. Goal, like I said, is 18, we're on track to complete 19, hopefully by this February. So, any, any questions about this program that you might have or anything?
I have three questions for you. First of all, so you have 18, we've been doing this project for years. So how many households or how many structures do you think would fit into this program? If we had, in a perfect world, if we had all the money? How many, how many structures in Beatrice could we do, could you do that would apply, that would fit into this category? 100, 200, 300?
Maybe, yeah, that's, I mean, that's a really good question. I mean, low income, I know it's like 80%.
Okay.
Um, of the median income, of course, which a lot of people think is lower than what you didn't expect. Um, so eligibility wise, I'd, I'd assume quite a, quite a few people. Um, property wise, I'd expect the same thing. I don't remember the last time I looked at a flood, flood plain map of Beatrice, but I don't think much of it is in a flood plain, if I recall.
Yep.
Um, otherwise, I mean, as long as they're eligible for, for the household to meet that, um, HUD housing to meet the, you know, bring it up to code. So that's, that's kind of been one of the main things is we got to bring the house up to code within the, within the.
So a couple hundred plus would be your guess?
Probably.
Fair. So second question is, if, if I'm, if this is, if I'm awarded a grant, obviously I'm not going to get everything done in my home. You're, you're not going to fix everything because these are.
$24,999.
Okay? So obviously I'm not going to fix everything for 25K, just south of 25K. So if I want to reapply for this, do I go to the, if I've gotten this grant this year, can I apply for it next year or do I go to the bottom of the stack?
No, I think you can re, sorry, I'm not, I'm not extremely knowledgeable on the whole application process. Um, I'm more the inspector, do the inspections. But, um, from what I know is that yes, you'd be able to reapply. Um, I know these CDBG grants are, um, not being funded as much anymore throughout the whole state of Nebraska. Um, just the, the funding from the, it's just not being received for this, but yeah.
So you're the inspector, so my last question is something you will be able to answer. So I, I understand the process from us, you know, we get the money that, you know, we delegate, put it out to you, delegate it out to you guys. So you, you inspect the property or you hire, they hire the contractor, you inspect it? Pre-construction, during construction, and at the end of the construction?
Correct, yep, yep. So we do, yeah, so starting off, we do an initial inspection is what we call it, which where we just go to the property after they're eligible, income wise, go up to the property, do the initial inspection. And that we just do to, we create a, what we call a work write-up, basically just a list of items that need to be fixed on the home in order for it to meet code. So, so we create a list that, that is separated into two categories. So we have a priority list and an alternatives list on this work write-up. So the priorities are going to be items, of course, we are required to take care of under the regulations of the program. Um, basically if there's any hazards, uh, uh, safety things that need to be taken care of, they need to be fixed. Um, alternatives are, are things that can be done through the program, but, um, they aren't necessarily required. So if it's weatherization, maybe they could use newer windows or a newer furnace or AC, but it's still working, then we can do that. What was the question?
No, you got it. No, that, you answered it, but so the, so the last.
Yeah, so the initial, yeah, that's what it was, initial inspections, we do that. Then we do progress inspections throughout, make sure the work is going okay. Um, so yeah, we, we try and get out to each project at least once during the construction to make sure everything's going all right, see if the homeowner has any issues. Um, we're in constant communication with contractors or the homeowners, whichever it may be. They, they love to call us, so we enjoy talking to them about anything. And then, yeah, final, uh, final inspection as well. So at the end of the project, um, we'll have one of our guys, um, someone like myself will go out and do a final inspection of all the work that was completed. Again, make sure that the homeowners is happy. If, if there's something that is not right, then we'll get the contractor to come back out and of course take care of it. So they will, yeah, so we'll, we'll go throughout the whole program, um, doing inspections. As far as the, as far as the contractors, so we have a list of our own contractors that we do use. It's, we can add people to the list, we've taken people off the list. Um, all we need is their information, their W9, their licenses, and then we can add them to our list of people to use. Um, a lot of these communities that we have these programs go in, um, we tried our best to use local contractors. A lot of the times that doesn't work out. Given the situation that we're in with economy, a lot of the contractors are as busy as they are and they don't want to work with grant funds to get a paycheck that maybe will be two weeks later than what they wanted. Or some of us, or they have to fill maybe a little extra paperwork. Um, and so we, we do our best to work with locals, but a lot of times we just end up using some of our guys which are from around the area, Lincoln. We have some in, uh, Fall City, uh, just throughout the region because, of course, a lot of them don't want to travel either. So we have to find ones that are willing to travel, otherwise we have to use ones specific to those locations. But, um, we, we do often use our own contractors. We always ask homeowners if they have a recommendation or if they want to use someone that they know and trust, whether that's a roofing, window person, whatever it does, um, whatever they do, then we are more than happy to, to reach out to them, take their paperwork, ask if they want to work with us, and then use them. And so we've done that in the past as well.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
I just, so T, in this process, we write the grant, they administer it, right? So was the 547, was that a limit in the grant?
Yes.
Okay. I'm with you. So I just want you to know, we appreciate, all of us appreciate what Send does in helping Beatrice in a lot of different things we do. So please take that back.
Yeah.
Okay, we really appreciate the help that you guys give us. And anything you can do to help us get more of this, please do, because we can use it in our community, so.
Yeah, no, appreciate you guys' support with all this. It's been, it's been great and we've been happy to be able to help improve your community and we enjoy all the feedback we get from the homeowners from working on their houses and they just love it, so.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you. Any, anything else?
Cole, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have a good evening.
You guys too, thank you.
Mr. McLean, let's close the hearing.
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:14 PM.
Second.
Your vote please. Passes eight to zero. We'll move on to the second public hearing for the purpose of considering adoption of plan modification 25-1 to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment area number two, Stoddard Redevelopment Project.
So I think everybody's familiar with the Stoddard School and the process of the city acquiring that, that project and, or that property and how things are going. One thing I will note, you'll notice that we got rid of the letters, right? We used to call them plan modification. You know, we have, we first went through the alphabet, then we went with double alphabet. And we were getting close to going through triple alphabet and we decided to start with a number. So 25-1, 2, 3 going forward, so that's the first thing to note. Um, Stoddard School, uh, we've been working with Hoppy Development to redevelop that school. Uh, what you have before you is their TIFF application for that project. Uh, they currently own that school building, they acquired it from us just about a week ago. And so they've got about a $5.8 million project going on there to turn that school building into 25 units. It'll be senior housing. And we have Connor with, uh, Hoppy here to answer any questions you have about the particular project. Connor, you want to come up and tell us a little bit about the project?
So yeah, thanks, I'm Connor Menard with Hoppy Development and, uh, we're glad to start getting the project going here shortly. Like, um, they said, we did acquire the project, um, last week and we're looking to start some demo work and some asbestos abatement here shortly. And then, um, looking to close on all the other funding sources here in, in May. Really is probably when we're going to actually start, um, serious work on the project, um, when all the funding sources align. But TIFF is a huge source for this project, um, to help this thing cross the finish line. Um, and again, these are for senior, senior residents, um, so people who are 55 and older, um, this project will be. And, um, and actually just going through the project, um, it's, it's actually a great, ended up being a great site for, uh, we were keeping a lot of the, the walls the same and a lot of, some of the brick will maintain its shape and trying to keep as much as we can, some of the benches that are kind of aligned. Um, so some people who went there for school actually might, might remember some of the material. So it, it actually ended up being a perfect site to do an adaptive reuse project, but we're excited to get things going and here to answer any questions you may have.
Will these be based on income or the income regulated?
Yeah, so they, this is an affordable housing project with NIF, the Nebraska Investment Finance Authority. Um, there's actually 20% of the units are, um, are not income or, um, restricted, but all the other ones are 60% of the area median or below. So 80% of the units are, and then 20% will, will be market rate.
And what's the total units you're going to have?
Uh, 25.
And I read it's like five, public and private, it's like $5.8 million or so, the entire project cost. So thank you for that. The, in two different places in here, T, it talks about this is in accordance with our comprehensive plan. We have a comprehensive plan, right, that's fairly new or?
No.
No, like 100?
Fairly old.
It's kind of, it's kind of disappeared from the city administrator's report, so.
Right, we were still looking for grant funds or to update it, but yes, we do have comprehensive plan.
My question is if we're actually still looking for that, okay. And you, uh, my last question is, um, when would you think you'd be able to start having people actually use the units, when you'll be done?
Yeah, it'd be, hopefully we can begin lease up in, I mean, probably end of the years pushing it, but it'd be most likely, um, first quarter of, of 2026.
Cool. About a year out then.
Yeah, about a year.
So all, none of it's owner occupied, it's all rent?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So, and will you hire someone to manage the outside of the building and maintain like the grounds and that type of thing?
Correct, yeah, we'll have property management. And then we are also redoing the, um, the old hotel downtown as well. Um, so we'll have some units there as well that we can, um, hopefully have like a property management onsite. Otherwise, we're, we're based out of Lincoln, have somebody travel, but most likely we'll, we'll have some leasing manager and property maintenance person onsite.
We're hoping it'll get big enough between the two that you'll have somebody here onsite.
Correct, yeah. And then we're also looking to potentially develop the, there's some remaining ground south of Stoddard, develop that to more housing as well.
And, and just so you guys know, this is not their first redo of, um, a project like this. And I know you guys have done a really good job and so we're looking forward and excited for our partnership with you. So thank you. All right. Don't see anything else, thank you very much. Thank you for coming on a cold night and have a good evening.
Thanks.
All right, shall we close the public hearing?
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:20 PM.
Second.
Your vote please. That passes eight to zero. All right, we'll move on to resolutions. Resolution number 7493, adopting plan modification 25-1 to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment area number two, known as the Stoddard Redevelopment Project.
I move the resolution number 7493 be passed and adopted.
Second.
This is resolution to approve the TIFF project you just heard about, assuming your approval. We'll go back to CRA for the final redevelopment agreement, which I believe a draft has been provided to Hoppy and so we're working on those final details. And then once that's done, we'll get everything filed for the press release and be ready to go.
Any more discussion needed? If not, your vote please. And that passes eight to zero. All right, resolution number 7494, executing the loan agreement, promissory note, personal guarantee and deed of trust between the City of Beatrice and Blackburn Rentals LLC for a direct loan in the amount of $38,880 uh, from the city's CDBG downtown revitalization grant 23-DTR-002.
I move the resolution number 7494 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Uh, another part of our down, our 2023 DTR grant, again, we're continuing to work through projects there. Uh, this one has finally made it through all of the, uh, environmental reviews. 115 North Fifth Street, Blackburn used to be the Roselle's, if anybody remembers that one being in the downtown area. Um, if you look through the proposal, Blackburn's got some facade improvements on there, some windows, some signage, some of those type of things is what they're looking to improve with this particular grant. Again, like all the other downtown grants, it's written as a forgivable loan because in the event that he does not keep his improvements for five years, the city has to repay the state of Nebraska. And so we write as a forgivable loan in the event, as long as he does what he's supposed to do, which I can't imagine taking the windows out in five years, but if he does for some reason, he's got to repay us, uh, otherwise the loan gets forgiven.
Any questions needed? If not, your vote please. And that.
Probably seven.
Yeah, take, yeah, Terry, yeah, Terry needs to come off, no, or just a, a not, a nothing.
Stay?
Yep, seven to zero.
He'll be back.
Okay, we'll move on to resolution number 7495, executing any and all documents necessary to release and discharge Nebraska Bank and Beatrice Hospitality LLC regarding the property assessed Clean Energy, known as PACE agreement.
I move the resolution number 7495 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So PACE is one of our economic development tools that we have. In 2021, we entered into two PACE agreements, one for the Holiday Inn Express, one for the MySpace Motel. I honestly don't really know which one is which here, uh, if you want, we can figure that out. But if you recall, what PACE allows the property owner to do is they go get a loan from a bank, right? To put in energy efficiency into their buildings. So they put in better lighting, they put in low flow toilets, those types of things. The theory being is they save on their utility bill and that's what then they use to make those loan payments going forward. The banks like it because they get a higher priority when it comes to their loan. So they step into the place of about where real estate taxes are. So they take a superior lean to everybody else. The property owner likes it because then it allows them to have a lower interest rate. We simply end up just being the conduit. We, we just set up a PACE district and let it occur. We don't loan anybody money, we are not obligated to do anything. We just kind of have to allow it to happen. And so these two particular PACE agreements that you have before you have been paid off. The, both hotels have been sold. And when the owner, who we had with the PACE agreement on both of them, sold the properties, they paid off their loans at the bank. And so the bank contacted us and said, hey FYI, these have been paid off. And so we're here tonight to have you guys officially release these loans. Again, we don't have anything into them, uh, there's no other obligations on behalf of the city, but we'll just mark them as being paid off and closed and go on the next one.
Any discussion needed? Your vote please. That passes eight to zero. Move on to resolution number 7496, executing all, any and all documents necessary to release the discharge Pinnacle Bank and Beatrice Hospitality II LLC regarding the property assessed Clean Energy Agreement, known as PACE.
I move the resolution number 7496 be passed and adopted.
Second.
The exact same thing we just talked about, it's for the other hotel.
Your vote please. That passes eight to zero. Move on to item E, resolution number 7497, appointing Jay Murphy as interim chief of police.
I move the resolution number 7497 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So, Mr. Murphy's been serving as director since November of 2023, uh, been doing a great job. Please, the chief of police is a civil service position. So to kind of start that process, uh, the first step in there is we'll name the interim police chief and then we'll go through the process of all the requirements that are required through the civil service process. Uh, but step one is appointing Mr. Murphy as a interim police chief.
Discussion.
Do we really want to do this?
Yes. Your vote please. And that passes eight to zero.
It was close, Jay.
We have one ordinance tonight, ordinance amending section 24-87 of the Beatrice City Code, regulating occupation taxes imposed on telecommunications companies.
I move that said ordinance be given number 25-1, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, so your vote please. And that passes eight to zero. Ordinance number 25-1 by number only the first time, 25-1 the second, and 25-1 the third and final time.
I may that ordinance number 25-1 be passed and approved.
Second.
So LB 1023 in the last legislative session, uh, was passed by the Unicam role and in it, it was to reduce telecommunication occupation tax from 5% to 4%. It's not the clearest statute that's written, it's somewhat vague as to whether it applies to new occupation tax or existing occupation taxes. We have an existing occupation tax at 5%. Uh, what this ordinance would do is it would take down the 4% occupation tax. The legislative intent was that as a result of doing this, your telecommunication provider would lower your bill and so we would pass on the savings to all of the people out there.
Triple down economics.
So, uh, having looked at it, uh, we had one telecommunication company that kept bringing this up to us. We looked at the dollar amount, it quite honestly wasn't enough to continue to warrant. So we went and proposing the change to you, um, if that was the intent of legislation to be all occupation taxes, that way we were in compliance, but it would lower your telecommunication occupation tax from 5% to 4%.
Any discussion needed? If not, your vote please. That passes eight to zero. Public forum, the purpose of public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council this time. Anyone here for the public forum? Seeing none, we'll move on to discussion and reports. First report is, discussion report is Main Street Quarterly Report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for being out on a cold evening.
Yes, thank you. I'm Virginia Gifford, I'm with Main Street Beatrice. And you all should have received, um, quarterly report document. So beginning with the downtown property strategy, um, this here kind of focuses on maintenance concerns, rehabilitation, and building quality, and redeveloping the housing opportunities and the upper levels in our downtown buildings. Um, part of the measures of success that we've highlighted during the October, November, December months, we began updating the listings of properties available as a community resource and data on inquiries on those properties. So I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with the Booms Tracker. So that's one tool that, um, I just began, uh, filling in. So that will, um, will help us track the, um, the buildings that are in need of maintenance or, um, being rehab. or being rehabbed. Then also the transfer of the Kensington to the City of Beatrice was completed. We've worked alongside the city to continue the facade improvement grant process. I spoke with Taylor today and he mentioned that, that the facade grant applicants are in abundance. So that's a, a good measure of success with that as well. Six out of 20 direct visits to property owners was completed by myself specifically. I came on December 9th. So for those, for October and November and up until December 9th, Main Street Beatrice did not have a executive director. So a lot of the board members were picking up the slack in that time. And then also Smith, Schaefer, and Davis moved into their restored building. Next, entrepreneurship, development, and retention strategy. This kind of covers our business retention and community cohesion and kind of unity amongst our business owners. The measures of success that I'd like to highlight, that I personally conducted 20 direct business meet and greets with downtown businesses, answer questions and help them get acclimated to what resources are available, more specifically, available to them through the city. Continued assisting entrepreneurs in downtown and finding funding resources in rental properties. During the, basically the 20 days that this report encompasses, that I was staffed here, there was one out of town business looking to relocate to Beatrice. So I provided him information on rentals that are available and as well as information on the LB 840. And then in that time, I began assisting two businesses with resource expansion resources. So kind of helping them, like I said again, getting acclimated with what funding sources are available to them and helping them reach their goals. And that also encompasses local, state, and federal business incentives. Like I said, LB 840 is the one that I've been highlighting to the people. Next, marketing strategy. One of the things is the Beatrice campaign was implemented. It was implemented to promote the business of downtown, retain area residents for commerce. And it's more of a downtown campaign identity and to kind of highlight our events. This was specifically put in place to work alongside your stake your claim logos and campaigns. What I'd like to highlight is that Main Street Beatrice has purchased ads for 2025 with Quebe and the Beatrice Daily Sun. During that quarter, we also successfully did the Night of the Great Pumpkin, the Governor's Pheasant Hunt holiday events. They came out with the holiday shopping guide, the fire truck rides with Santa, the window display contest that went on with the local businesses. And then also did the gift a day giveaway. Also another thing I'd like to add in there, that the lamp post lights, or snowflakes throughout the city. That was another thing that Main Street Beatrice was involved with. Lastly, emergency response flexibility and the paddock Kensington. So basically, like I said, you guys all know that Main Street Beatrice has been involved with the paddock Kensington initiative. And so a lot of that stuff happened before I came on. But I know that there's a lot of board members that were, that took a lot of hours and, and put a lot of hours into making that happen. So I'd like to highlight that. And then lastly, as I mentioned earlier, Morgan Fox, the former executive director, she left in September. So like I said, that left October and November up until December 9th with Main Street Beatrice not having an executive director. And then in summary, this will be coming later, I'll be working with Tobias with our upcoming city funding proposal and just to kind of highlight. And that will be asking for $40,000 again in quarterly increments of $10,000.
Questions?
I, maybe just, first off, I would like you to pass on to the Main Street Board a big thank you for putting those lights in the park by the old library, all right? It's too bad you couldn't got a better deal from somebody that provided the lights, but you know, but that was, that was very, that was a huge, huge change for that area and it was very positive. I received a lot of comments on it, so I would just like you to pass that on, all right? And let's see, the, if I counted right, and here, Virginia, you, you're going to have like, in your BRE, you have like 75 between now and September 1 or something, or from when you started through September 1, some, something like that. I would like you to put in there, if it's not, I just can't remember, I've seen the document, it's just been too long since I've seen it. I would like you to put in there to, when you're visiting with each one of these businesses, to ask them what business they would like us to go and try to recruit. Because we're going to make some major changes on this downtown here pretty quick and it would be nice to know what the, at least the existing businesses would like us to try to concentrate on. So I'd appreciate if you'd stick that question in there and let us know.
Okay, so looking for what businesses they'd like to see.
Yep, in the downtown area. That maybe we're missing now or maybe that we need more of.
Absolutely.
Well, welcome. This painless, wasn't too hard, was it?
I'm alive.
No, I mean, you, you've been here since December 9th, that's a great report.
Yes.
You know, we've had a pretty good working relationship with Main Street, we want to continue that. And I think like Terry said, you know, over the next five or six years, there's going to be some major changes that are going to be very positive as we revitalize downtown. And your position will be very important as we work with you and work with all the businesses downtown. So thank you very much and enjoy your evening, or what's left of it.
Yes, thank you all.
Okay, now I believe it's the city administrator's report.
Yeah, a couple of highlights. First off, the game is 7-7, about midway through the second quarter, in case you want to keep track of that one. No problem. Second of all, it was asked earlier when the water park was built, my answer that I received from Mr. Pethod was first season was 2020, or excuse me, 2000.
2000.
2000.
You were right. I, I said 98 or 99, he thought.
Sounds like it was starting getting built in 98.
Okay.
First season was 2000.
Ten years old.
Also, I have to correct myself, during the Boswell meeting, I said we did not have Odell as a customer and Mr. Rue corrected me. And we do have Boswell, or Mars is a picking up in Odell, so I did want to make that change. A couple of updates in the report, paddock and Lincoln schools, we have the asbestos surveys back. We have those out to contractors right now to get bids back in for the asbestos removal. Probably two weeks or so before we can start getting those bids back in, but things are progressing there. We did have people in cleaning those buildings out and getting a lot, rid of a lot of the furniture and stuff that was in there. So carpet, that kind of stuff, so we're, we're moving along there. The CBG Public Works Grant, another one of those that we got, we have up to $480,000 to do some mill and overlay projects. James has those projects designed, we're ready for bid, we're just waiting back for some clarification from the state. It's exactly what types of things we need to put in the contracts. Is it Davis Bacon, is it Buy America, those types of requirements, we get those. If you recall, what we did was we had our 2025 mill and overlay projects and we put our 2026 mill overlay projects, we put those both into that grant application and they were picked up about half of those costs, so helps us spread those dollars around. And then I want to update you on the congressional appropriation money. If you remember, in March of 2023, we, we applied for some appropriation money. The money we got from Senator Fisher for the new hangar, worked easily, right? The hangar's price is going to be built sometime in June, July of this year. The money we got for the wastewater plant, not so easily. I'm still hung up at the EPA, trying to get them to finalize and approve all the documents. We got through all their environmental reviews done. Now we're trying to figure out again what front loads we, or what front ends we need on the contract, Buy America, all that good stuff. I still have not gotten the application yet from the EPA, so I can apply for the grant that we've already been told we'll get. And EPA then reshuffled everybody that was working on this and so they all went to someplace else. And so I have like one person left and I think she's handling all of them for our entire region.
Maybe they're working on dampsters.
Let's hope. Do you think they all went to that project?
Yeah, right.
So again, it's one of those, sometimes you get some free money and it just takes a little longer to get through some paperwork. And so try to make sure we don't pick projects that we need right away when we do some of those things. So other than that, answer any questions you might have in report or anything else, so.
It wasn't in the report, but I do have a question. I know I've asked you this a dozen or so times, how many meters do we have? How many customers do we have, electric meters?
Electric meters, you have about 5,500, generally the number we use.
I, when I was going through the report, I couldn't remember, it was 5,200 or 5,800, so I was close.
Need an exact number, I can get you an exact number, but.
Nope. I needed, I, I just, as I read Tobias's, I read, the only reason I bring it up is I read through the report, I read the number of people that are delinquent. And then I read the number of people that you actually had to turn off. And the percentage of that is a little overwhelming. Not the, not the one that disconnect, but the percentage that, that is, you know, so. Part of the, part of my stuff that I put on for the retreat, we need to figure out how to get more money here in Beatrice. So you've got to, so anyway, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else?
106.
If not, Mr. McLean.
I move, excuse me, I move the meeting be adjourned at 7:43 PM.
Second.
Your vote, please. That passes eight to zero. Thank you very much. Next meeting will be February 3rd, 2025 already.